Sometime in the future.
Do I want what?
Do you want me to do it or help you?
It's quarterly.
Ah, yeah.
It's due, it's just, I'm just placing a thought. Let me know, just let me know.
Okay.
I had something I wanted to bring up during that, I think is important about the Department of Protective Services.
How much notice do you need? How much notice do you need? So if I said, let's do it next week?
Yeah, everybody would use it.
I mean, we had our meeting last Thursday, so I can write it. If something else needs to be added, I can always do that, or I can trim it.
You know, tougher where Ben.
There's probably a dozen different things that are interesting, but in the interest of expediting things. I just don't want to drag out. I want it to be useful information.
Yeah.
There's probably three days I could do this. Okay, just let me know.
And now call the Norton City Council Committee Work Session Order Monday, June 18th, 2018. Time is 7:02. Please stand for Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silent prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We call the roll, please.
Mr. Gaynor?
Here.
Mr. McLoane?
Here.
Mr. Kurant?
Here.
Mr. Towesley?
Here.
Ms. Whipke?
Here.
Mr. Kernan?
Here.
Mr. Pilat?
Here.
Under Committee Work Session, General Topics of Discussion, Unmarked Police Car Safety. Mr. McLoane?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, the chief is here today, and we have some quotes here for the unmarked police vehicle. I just want to know that this was in the 2018 budget, and it will come out of the 140 Police Equipment Fund. And the quotes are attached, and see if the chief wants to say something.
Thank you. Just like you stated, yeah, back in 2018, or the end of 2017, I requested the purchase of three vehicles, two unmarked and one unmarked. The two 2018 Dodge Charger Police Cruisers have been ordered at Fred Martin, and we still have not received them. So I am down to six marked police cars at this time. They should be in. We're hoping within the next two to three weeks, we did receive VIN numbers, so that's usually a good sign. I would like to purchase an additional unmarked vehicle. We do currently have, in the fleet, a 2008 Ford Taurus, which is an unmarked vehicle that currently our detectives use. It is a 2008 Ford Taurus with roughly a little over 100,000 miles on it. We have done a very good job maintaining that vehicle. You know, it's been a very good vehicle for us. I would like to keep that vehicle to be used when officers go to school. We had a couple of officers, two weeks ago, go to a class in Cleveland, you know, had to use a marked cruiser. So I would like to keep that 2008 Ford Taurus. It's roughly worth around $2,400. I checked with Rick's, that currently does maintenance on it. We have put a little bit of money into that vehicle. He says it's a good vehicle, and we should get a couple more years' use out of it. So I would like to keep that as an additional vehicle if I could. And then you should have the three proposals. Obviously, Fred Martin Superstore came in the lowest.
Anyone have any questions for the chief?
Yeah, I have a question, if I could. This is just for my own information, because I'm not against anything here, and the dollars sound like they're appropriate. Why Grand Cherokee Laredo? It seems like it's a cumbersome vehicle with poor gas mileage. Is it durability? What's the thinking behind that vehicle?
We've used to drive the Jeep Cherokees. They've been good vehicles for us. Fred Martin does, you know, give us a discount when maintenance is needed to be worked on. We haven't had any problems with Jeep Grand Cherokee Laredos. And it is nice to have an SUV, because there is some equipment that we need to put in each of the vehicles for our detectives. It could also be used as a command vehicle, which is what we use, the 2017 140 now.
Okay, good, thank you.
That was my next question, was what equipment needs put in this radio?
Yeah, we would put in a radio. It's, it has an unmarked visor light. It's got lights in the front and a light bar in the back hatch area, and a siren.
Right, and a divider?
No. No, it's not used to transport prisoners.
Okay. And is the lights and everything, is that included in this price?
No. That package is roughly another $1,600 that I would get added on from BNC Communications. And I have money in my budget for that equipment.
So chief, on a regular squad car, it's a lot more than 1,600?
I'm sorry?
On a regular squad car, you'd probably put more money into it.
Oh, yes.
A lot more, okay.
Charlotte, did you?
I've got a question. Go ahead, Charlotte.
No, I'm done.
I've just got a question for you, chief. Do you know off the top of your head, once you add this vehicle, how many vehicles, marked, unmarked, whatever, that you would have?
I currently have six unmarked, and I have, or I'm sorry, six marked and two unmarked. So this would be the third unmarked.
But you've got two more coming.
Correct. So it would be a total of... Nine. I'm sorry.
Ten counting this?
Correct, it would be a total of 10.
11.
Now, keep in mind that the one Dodge Charger that we have, that's our K-9 vehicle, that is assigned to one officer because it's used for the dog. So that vehicle can only be used by that one officer.
And you've got 16 officers, is that full-time total?
16, full-time for part-time. Thank you.
And quarterly or something, can we get a list of your vehicles and mileage and stuff like that?
Sure.
And cases like this, whatever order.
Okay. So you want a quarterly list with mileage?
I don't know that, maybe semi-annual?
Yeah, something that we just have to keep with us.
Okay.
Wouldn't mind having one soon.
Yeah, if something changes.
Give us a soon, so, yeah. Yeah, if something changes, that'd be a good idea, then.
I guess just to keep it updated as things change, if cruiser gets hit, put out of commission, or dies, or whatever the case is.
I did write a list before I came up here with current mileage, if you want it, but I can verbally give it to you. I don't have anything in writing. So we currently have, car 62 is a 2017 Dodge Charger. It has a little over 49,000 miles. Car 63, same 2017 Dodge Charger, 43,864 miles. Car 65 is a 2017 Dodge Charger, 43,156. Car 66, which is a 2016 Dodge Ram, that's our DARE vehicle. That vehicle gets replaced every other year by Fred Martin. That's, currently has 22,503 miles on it. We like to keep that under 25,000 for the lease. Car 67, which is our current K-9 vehicle and assigned to the K-9 officer, is a 2015 Dodge Charger with 103,000 miles on it. 68 is a 2013 Dodge Ram truck that we purchased after it was a DARE vehicle. It currently has 111,000 miles on it. Our unmarked 2008 Ford Taurus currently has 100,000 miles on it. The 2017 unmarked Jeep Cherokee has 12,000 miles on it.
What year was that? I'm sorry.
2017.
17.
And you said 12,000?
Yes.
So chief, what point do you start getting nervous about the cars? How many miles are on it? When it starts hitting 100,000?
Right. When they start hitting, usually the Dodge Charger, the marked vehicles, at 80,000. But like the Dodge Charger, the 2015, the K-9 vehicle, we did put some money into it, because it's only used by one officer. It's only used during his 40-hour work week. It's got 103,000 miles on it, and we, you know, we've got good luck with it.
So that one's going to be pretty soon, then, really? If that's the only car you're using for a K-9?
Correct.
Is that in the budget for next year or something?
Yep, that'll be in the rotation.
All right. Anyone else have any questions for the chief?
Can I ask one more, please?
Yeah, go on.
Could you just briefly kind of explain to us, I assume that unmarked cars are each assigned to one officer, and then the other cars are used by multiple officers?
Yeah.
Could you just kind of explain that? Like, is it just two officers per, like, car 62? Is that two officers, or is it all dependent on the week?
Actually, my captain just did the cruiser assignments, and I wish I had him with me. But roughly two to three officers are assigned per car. We're trying to keep these cars, you know, not being run 24/7 on all three shifts. Because that's when we start to see the problems, when there's no downtime for them.
Okay. And you're saying the unmarked cars are pretty much used by one officer, then?
Well, we have two detectives that currently work Monday through Friday. What generally happens is, is if evidence needs to go to BCI, you know, one of them will take it. They do, they do do some investigative work. They need to do follow-up on some crimes, they'll do it. But at this point, like I said, there's two detectives, one vehicle. You know, they do have a spare. It's usually, if I have a meeting, I'll take the one. But that's how that's done.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else have anything? Well, with that, chief, how are we with time on this? Are we able to do the three readings, or are we rushed?
Yeah, you could do the three readings, yeah.
We have plenty of time for this, okay.
Keep in mind, if we do go three readings, takes it after a break.
We'll be having the third reading, the last meeting before the break.
That's fine.
Do we have three meetings before then?
No.
No.
But we, I mean, I would suggest wherever we're at, at that last meeting.
Got it, okay. Because I was going to say, I don't think you have three council meetings before you go on break, though.
Just two.
Okay.
Okay. We'll have our final reading at that. Okay, with that, I'd like to put the unmarked police car on next week's agenda for its first reading.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mr. McLoane?
Yes.
Mr. Pilat?
Yes.
Mr. Towesley?
Yes.
Chief, are you going to stick around for the blue line?
Sure.
Okay.
Next item, petition for utilities.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm a little confused. It says petition for utilities, but we actually, there's actually two petitions for two separate areas?
Yes, ma'am.
One's for Clark Mill, and that's going to be for basically the development they're looking to put in up there?
Residential development, yes.
Okay, and is that going to hold 108 houses? That's actually going to come off the street, correct?
Yes. I don't know that 108 is what is proposed. That might change. We've been staying around 100. It'll be approximately 100 homes.
Okay. Where's exactly this going to start?
So the city of Barberton is in the process of bidding out the Norton Acres wastewater treatment plant decommissioning. They're actually going to come across Clark Mill and down across the city's property. We did grant them an easement on our property in 2017. It essentially will extend Clark Mill south to the intersection of where that main line crosses Clark Mill. I can't give you exact location, because that's Barberton, but essentially, it's about 960 feet, I believe, is the estimated.
Are you talking from Norton Avenue, that main intersection?
No, no, it goes down the hill, down the hill, towards the sand and gravel, Fleischer Sand Gravel. Essentially, there's like a little stream that they're going to follow down through there to cut over to Barber, to get into their trunk lines, is my understanding. So this property is on the west, west side of Clark Mill, and it will extend the sewer from the driveway all the way to, it's like 960 feet, to the intersection of the main line that's running from what it used to be, or what, I'm sorry, what soon will be the former Norton Acres plant.
And when you say driveway, you mean the entrance to this new allotment?
To the new allotment, yes, I'm sorry. I just wanted to make sure.
That's fine.
If you drive down Clark Mill, if you're heading north, there's a little, it looks like a farm drive, for lack of a better term, off to the left, that's approximately where that's going to go.
The old Hurwick property?
I don't know whose property. It's just, there's no mailbox, there's nothing, it's just a dirt.
It's before you get to the racetrack and Fleischer's.
Oh, yes, yes, ma'am. It's about 1,000 feet.
Like up at the top, next to the church?
Yes.
Yeah.
Good, yes.
I believe that's the old Hurwick property there. So that's where the development's going to start, and where we're looking for the sewer?
Yes, ma'am.
And I don't remember, was that for water, too? Or are we just looking at sewer for right now?
No, water's there, just sewer only. And the cost on that, the engineer's estimate, I think, is roughly 100,000, but I...
But that shouldn't be on us?
It's not on us. No, 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 I'm just, we tried to get an estimate, so we had an idea how much it was going to cost.
And is this, the company actually doing this development? Is that JLP?
Yes, ma'am.
Is JLP actually a conglomeration of all the people that owned those properties?
It's LLC.
I'm just curious, due to the fact that the prices aren't, what, for a dollar, $10, they turned over the property, so I was wondering.
I'm assuming, I don't, I don't know that answer. JLP is the LLC that is in ownership of the property currently.
Okay.
And it's 100%, just so clear now.
But this would be assessed yearly on the taxes, correct? Is that the way I understood this?
Yeah, we would have the council make a determination on the term to assess the property.
Is that normally the way things are done when it's in development?
When, well, if the developer's asking for the city to design an sewer line extension or water line extension, then yes, it's very normal to get that petition signed to protect the city. Because we don't want to design something and then not have the development go forward. This allows us, the way they recoup our money, should the development not go forward.
Okay, and then I also had the question, on the actual petition itself, there was a part on it, and I didn't mark which part that was. But it states, "The petitioner further acknowledges and agrees in consideration of the construction, blah, 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 and requests that the amount that would have been assessed on said property, except for the absence of any benefit to the property, be assessed upon. No other property will receive special benefits." That's the part I'm interested in. The second line, where it says, "No other property will receive the special benefits." And that would be in, second paragraph. Does that mean that if there's someone else there, another resident or something, that wanted to get in on the sewer line, that they could not do so?
No, that's just normal language you put in an assessment to make, to say that they are agreeing, for purposes of our ordinance, that they're the only property that's benefiting. No one else is asking for it, they're the only ones asking for it. Legally, if you're doing a normal assessment proceeding, there would be other properties that benefit along the way. But because it's the petition, we're saying no one else is benefiting, just you. So you're going to be assessed, period.
But what happens if the neighbor across the road said, hey, it's coming, I would like to get in on it?
Well, it's going to be a dedicated line at completion, right? Public sewer line?
Yes.
Yeah, public sewer line, public water line, so the right to tap in. And that could be determined a couple ways. One is, depending on how it's paid for, is the city can determine that. If the developer advances the funds, then the developer can figure out what the tap-in is. But we control that, the way we can control that is through a development agreement. So down the line, if there's a development, you know, it makes sense to have an agreement that would spell out what our expectations are and what their expectations are, and put together in an agreement form.
And it's probably, they probably won't want to hear this, but I got to ask. I guess there's no way that we could say we'd like to have laterals put in for the people that are located during this area?
So I don't think they, most develop, I can't speak for this developer. If the city's willing to pay for it, right, ready to, willing to pay the cost to have those laterals installed, I don't think anyone would care to have that done along the way, because that just helps either them get recouped or us get recouped, the costs. Right? So I don't think there's any issue with that, but, you know, we could spell that out in an agreement if necessary.
Okay.
Yeah, but to your point, we would design it, we would design it with those laterals in mind. I mean, the idea is to have a line that's big enough to serve both the development and the properties along the way. Right, Mr. Fowler?
While we're at it, and it just happened to pop into my little head here, the racetrack over there. Now, I've heard rumors that it's going to close, but I just... Yeah, the Speedway. And my problem is, is we get complaints about the noise coming from it, and here comes another development that's going to be sitting there screaming about the noise they're hearing from the racetrack that was there before they ever were thought of. Just a...
So the noise ordinance is an ordinance passed by council? I know it's been looked at in the past. So, I mean, you have the right to revisit that, if you want to?
If I could, the developer is paying for this, so if someone else taps into it, like you just said a minute ago, that, depending on the contract that's signed, if they tap into it and the developer wants to charge him set dollar for tapping in or whatever, that money is going to help him repay his development fees.
Yeah, so what the developer's doing by the petition is agreeing that, I think the city is planning to design. Is that right, Mr. Fowler?
Yeah, we'd want to control the design.
So we would, we would advance the money, probably from the 128 fund or another fund, whoever council decides they want to pay for it, to design the water and sewer lines. I'm mixing the two projects now. And what they're agreeing is, if they don't move forward, then we can charge them to get our money back. So we would control that design. How it ultimately gets paid for, that's not determined yet. So there could be a loan involved, there could be a developer financing it upfront. There's a number of options. I don't think we're at that point yet. I think we're just trying to design it and get costs at this point. If it is the developer, you're right. If they tap in, they'll get recouped. If it's us who advances it, then, once it happens, then we get recouped. So, I mean, it's just a matter of who advances the money upfront. But that's not what you're determining now, right? Right now, we're just designing the lines.
I'm hearing two things from you. It might be my fault, but I'm hearing that we're not going to be on the line for it, but we might have to get recouped.
Yeah, so what this is saying, so I think the city's planning, or is going to ask council for the money to advance, advance the money to design the water and sewer lines, with the understanding that there's going to be a development coming down the line. If that development never comes, this property owner's telling us that we can charge him an assessment to get our money back. So we're going to pay the cost of designing it upfront, but we have the right to recover it from the developer in the event that it doesn't go forward.
Is there a timeline on that, or am I getting way ahead of?
There's no timeline. It really, I mean, that's something that, we're just telling them a year? Okay. I mean, that's, yeah, I mean, there's no, theoretically, unless they impose a timeline, the developer said, okay, or we impose a timeline, there's no timeline. We have the right to assess those costs. Once we determine, as a council, that they're not going to move forward, we can pass our ordinance and assess it. Law, that would be spelled out in a subsequent agreement between the parties. Sometimes you'll see an agreement done in connection with a petition that would spell all that out. But I think at this point, we didn't think it was, it would make a lot of sense to spend the time and money to go through the agreement until we have the design of the water line and the extension, the costs that were associated with it. Then, then you start lining up your loans and how everything's getting paid for, and you put it all in one agreement.
You mean kind of like the next one coming up?
For what?
Would be attached to petition B?
Which one are you talking about?
That's for an engineering that looks like us putting out the money?
Correct. That's what I'm saying, I was mixing the two. So there's Clark Mill, there's Cleveland Maslin Road, it's the same thing. Both have petitions associated with them. Just the Cleveland Maslin Road, there's a separate ordinance that deals with the engineering. And the idea is that not to exceed $75,000. We design, the city pays the money to design it, we control the plans. But then we have the right, should that development not go forward on Cleveland Maslin Road, to assess those properties, to recoup our costs.
Is there anybody who has any more questions on petition, the first petition for the development? Okay, then, the second one, that's on Cleveland Maslin Road, and that's the one that's going to be crossing, it's going to be starting from the school, the middle school, as far as the water line goes, and it's going to cross Wadsworth Road, and about how far that's going up to...
Mike Meeden owns three homes, or did own three homes there.
Mm-hmm.
The property that was purchased is the Mike Meeden property. And this petition is for Mike Meeden's property.
So just past Rick's?
Just past Rick's auto, there's...
Before you get to Reimer, I believe.
Three lots on the right, heading north, before you get to the, to the...
Side of Mill.
Okay, now I'm confused. If he sold the homes, why is it his petition?
Because it hasn't transferred yet. So there's actually going to be two parties on the petition, the developer and Mr. Meeden. That way, both people, so to speak, are on the hook if we move forward.
Okay, and then the sewer line is going to start on this side of Wadsworth Road?
Yes.
Just this side? Why, do we have sewer going all the way up there already?
So the sewer line cuts essentially from the package plant at the intermediate school, comes out to Cleveland Maslin Road, heads north to 261, takes a right, and heads east. Heads east on 261. Now, how far, I apologize, I don't know. But the only thing we have to do is run a connection from that line to the Meeden property, which...
It could run to the janitorial building.
Yeah.
I think it does.
Well, goes, I think he has it.
He's the one that, he's the one that extended it, wasn't he?
Go a little east of there.
It might be, yeah.
So there is sewer all the way up Cleveland Maslin, up to Wadsworth Road?
Yes, ma'am.
And we're just kind of crossing Wadsworth Road?
Yes.
To start going towards Copley?
Yes, ma'am. And Mr. Rick's auto, I didn't mean to cut you off, but Rick's auto has already been in the process of running his sewer down the alley. There's a paper street behind his property. My goal is to convince him to go out the front. But he's already in the process of trying to get connected to that sewer. And when I met with him, oh, March, April, somewhere in there, I apologize, I can't recall, but I was, encouraged him to wait, because we had been working on this project for quite some time to try to get this done.
Okay, and on this particular one, it does look like there is some, what, of a timeframe on this one?
Yes, the developer is, will not take ownership until next week, either the 25th or 26th, it's set to close. The problem, my concern was, coming to you all between the 26th and July 9th, if his time window is so tight, we needed to move this forward. The only reason I would even move it forward is if they bring those petitions signed. And that's why I sent them to you today, because I figured if you tell me that those petitions were acceptable, and that if I get them signed by Wednesday, we can get them on the agenda. I just felt like I wanted to better understand if that was acceptable for the council, for us moving forward.
With your break coming up.
Right, with the break coming up in a few weeks.
Okay, as I understand this, one, we don't have anybody asking us yet to put up our money upfront. But on the second one, we're going to.
JLP also would be something for us to advance, correct?
Yes.
And do we have a concept of what those engineering costs are for...
I want to say it's like 10 or 12,000.
So, it would also be, there'd also be design costs, there'd be a similar contract?
Yes.
For the Clark Mill project as well?
So, it'd be 75 or thereabout?
75 for Cleveland Maslin?
For Cleveland Maslin and 12, about 12,000 for the Clark Mill project.
Right.
Because we're, it's only 960 feet, the, the problem with the...
700, wasn't it?
Or somewhere in that neighborhood.
Yeah.
I'm getting 900, 900's in my brain for some reason.
The Clark Mill shows approximately 700.
Okay, 700, I'm sorry, but, but it's a short run, and, and, and the benefit we had is, a lot of the engineering for the Norton Acres plant, they did surveying, so we can use a lot of their surveying data, we just have to go the 700 feet, so, so the developer essentially benefited from us, I say us, but we pitched in for that project, but us and Barberton paying for that Norton Acres abandonment, so he's kind of getting a, a deal in a nice way to, to make that happen, because they have most of the survey data.
And, and just because that brought up another question, I'm curious, isn't there somewhat sewer coming up Clark Mill now, or is it just end right there at Norton Avenue?
I can't speak to that, I, I'm going to guess it just ends it, because you have the hump there, so we can't, we have to pump it over.
I thought it was starting to come up.
Okay, yeah, I don't, I don't remember.
I think, at one point, we looked at that, but because of that hill, it would require a grinder pump or something there, and they decided...
Well, it's got to end, where Stonewicks Road, right, yeah.
Probably Stonewick.
Clark Mill, it's got to be right there somewhere. Yeah.
But it's going, again, that goes up a hill.
Yeah.
So, we're not able to connect that way, so that's why it's going down the hill.
At the end, Stonewick, kind of at the top of the hill, and then we'd be going downhill.
It is, but I don't know where the line is that they connected into.
Well, it would just, why would we stop there and have this little portion of no sewer if it was possible to go ahead and do the whole thing, is what I was thinking.
I don't think, the, the way the ground, if I'm, the property that we're talking about decreases towards the north.
Right.
So, but I think the, the other, it's on, the other hill goes, the flow is south, so actually the flow is going to be going in opposite directions.
Can we look to see what sewer there and see if it would make sense to go ahead and incorporate?
Yeah, I'd just hate to leave a, a piece there with nothing when we could just get it all done at once.
I thought the same thing over, by little drive, but...
So, I'm, I guess, I have, what is it you want me to do with this, make a motion to...
What I'm asking council to do is, provided the petitions are worded in an acceptable form for the council, is, once they're executed, for us to provide an ordinance entering into those petitions, that, that says that, that those folks will be responsible for 100% of the costs associated with the projects, I just want to make sure again that the petitions were acceptable to everybody and, before we go through.
And this development's already been okay through the Planning Commission, has it not?
Just a preliminary plat, just a preliminary plat has been approved, there's a lot, there's quite a few more steps in the process, one will have to come to council, et cetera, but we're a little ways away from that, but we're just trying to make sure we...
As much as I hate to see vacant land get put to waste, so to speak, I can't argue with the fact that it's coming, and that, I guess, as long as others will be allowed to attach if they want to, tie in, it's not stopping in the way of anybody else, yes.
I just, and that's one of the things that Justin and I talked about, by us kind of fronting the money, we control that process a little more, meaning that we determine what those costs are, right, if, if we turn this over to a developer, the concern I have is if he makes it too outrageous for anybody, and I don't think this one would, but I'm just, just talking in general, I, I think we have a better idea of controlling those costs, and I think it, we might be able to encourage folks to connect rather than discourage through, through the development process, if that makes any sense.
Well, and again, I'll say, if there's any way that we can set it up for these people, have laterals and things that would save wear and tear on us as well, on the roads, I should say. Do we need to vote on this then, Justin?
Are you done, Charlotte?
Yes.
Let me ask a couple of questions before we get started, on the, on the two different lines, on the, on the line, on Clark Mill Road, that line's going to be ran from Norton Avenue up to wherever it's needed?
No, sir.
Not?
No, sir, no, sir, it's going to go from the property at, it's an old farm lane, it's the best way I can describe it, because I don't think it has an address, but it's just the way the hill is, it doesn't allow us to run it from Norton Avenue, so we have to go north, so we have to take from that drive north down to Fleischer's, sand and gravel.
I understand, okay, so the line's going to start at the beginning, like you said, the driveway?
Yes, sir.
And go north towards Clark Mill Sand and Gravel, or wherever, and eventually tie into the...
Well, it's right at, the, the connection's going to be right around the Fleischer's property.
Wherever they run the line through.
Yes, sir.
Okay, but we're picking up approximately 100 houses with that line, which in turn will be 100 new customers for Barberton, correct?
That's correct, sir.
My only suggestion, has anyone spoke to Barberton about sharing in the cost of the line, since they're going to be reaping some of the benefits from the line, I mean, I, I understand, we want to develop this, and I'm 100% behind the development, but if Barberton is going to reap a benefit from it also, I, I would, I would think that Barberton would be willing, or at least to talk about helping us pay for that line, or helping, if the developer actually pays for the line, you know what I'm saying, in conjunction with Barberton, maybe the developer and Barberton could get together, or us and the developer and Barberton, to ask them to share in the cost of this, since it's going to be benefiting them also in the future, that's just a thought, the other line, the other line on Cleveland Maslin Road, I just sort of note, isn't, is there or is there not a easement from Cleveland Maslin Road at approximately 300 feet going north to the, to the west, is there an easement that the city has where the street continues over to my park area, isn't there an easement across that, right here?
I don't think it's an easement as much as it's a paper street. But I don't want to, please don't quote me on that, but I think that's a street that just was never...
Okay, I'm, the reason I'm asking, I think you know, is if we were to want to run a water line and a sewer line to the park...
It's a pretty good place to run it, if you're asking.
That would be an excellent place to run it, if we did not have to purchase property, especially.
That's correct.
And since that, since that's already up there, you know, we talked about this before, and it was a matter of running it from the middle school, and, and this and that, now we're only running it, let's see, what, 500 feet at the most?
And you wouldn't need necessarily a large...
No.
You know, we could run a service line, service line, a two-inch line, if, yeah.
But small lines ran, if that's an easement, or if we would not have to purchase property.
I think it's a paper street, I, I, Bill, Mr. Berman and I have spoken to that street, so I'm, I'm going by his statement that that's a, that is a city street.
I'd like to see it looked at, if possible, if that's a possible scenario there to, to gain water, and not only would we benefit at the park, the people who, who own the small park on the corner who's trying to develop, I mean, to sell her land, it would also benefit her and those people in between Cleveland Maslin and Carl, so, if you would take a look at it.
Thank you.
So, I just want to make sure that I'm clear on this, there, there's not really any reason for us to share costs with Barberton or anything, because the developer's paying for this line at the end of the day, 100%.
Correct.
And, but, so there's, I mean...
I mean, I, I think to Mr. Gainer's point, though, we, we would ask, we had asked Barberton initially to help pay for it, and they were not...
To, to front the money.
We asked for even a portion of it, my argument is, they're getting 100% of the, they're going to get 100% of the revenue.
Right, they're picking up 100%.
Our, our people are putting in, oh, for example, our people are putting, paying that cost, whoever moves here is going to pay to put that line in, and Barberton's going to get 100% of the revenue, we'll get zero out of the sewer, now we get the water percentage, right, but, but my, I was trying, Justin and I had this conversation about trying, and we did talk to them, but they're not really willing, one, to help us pay for anything, or two, even share in the revenues.
What about tap-ins?
Or tap-ins.
Well, it, it seems to me, if you buy a piece of property in a new development, that you're paying, that's part of what you're buying, is you're buying the water and sewer access, so, if you want to build in a development, then you ought to expect that you're going to have to pay for those services, I mean, I, you know.
But can we look at that contract with them, with Barberton, because I thought the 25-year contract that we signed, I thought there was something specifically in there that required them to help with infrastructure expansion, and I would think that this would tie into that. I thought we, we called that out, I know it was discussed, but I thought it was in there.
I think you're right.
May, maybe the developer needs to go to Barberton and tell them they want to have sewer, and then let Barberton foot the cost.
All right, so do you guys need something done with this?
Well, I mean, if the petitions are acceptable, I'd like to get them, I'd like Justin to get an ordinance ready and get them on council's agenda, because we do have only two meetings before break, and, you know, that's what, that's what my intention was.
Need a voice vote, or just...
Whatever, as long as, I guess, as long as it's something, I would like the committee to say that they're acceptable, and it's okay to get them signed and get them, get the ordinance drafted and, and bring it forward, that's...
And then we would still have to okay that ordinance.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
We have another chance at saying...
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, I just...
It's just loud, loud and get boring.
Right, I just want to make sure everybody knows, just because we're saying yes to this does not mean that's the end of the story.
Correct.
Well, there's an, there's an ordinance for the Cleveland Maslin Engineering in here already.
Yes, that's true.
That's separate, that's separate, I'll, I'll, that's, that's not the petitions.
Okay.
The petitions are separate from the engineering.
But it's saying that we're going to pay for it, but we'll get to that one when we get there, at, at the moment, I would make a motion, and I'm fine with moving forward with these petitions and producing an ordinance.
I'll second that.
Motion, and second, any further discussion? Call the roll.
Ms. Whipke?
Yes.
Mr. Kernan?
Yes.
Mr. McLone?
Yes.
And that was for both of them, is that okay, Justin?
Fine with me.
Yeah, so it was just a voice vote?
Just a voice vote.
Next item, Cleveland Maslin Road, Engineering, Ms. Whipke.
Thank you, Mr. President, well, this kind of picks up where we just left off, this is going back to the water and sewer line for the Meeden properties, basically, and this is asking us to pay $75,000 for the engineer, correct?
We're not paying, we're going to front the money, but we're going to assess it to the property.
That we're going to wait to get it back?
Yes.
Yes, okay, I, I was like, wait to get it back, I mean, I've had to think what you're asking, I'm sorry.
Yeah, on a yearly property taxes.
Take time, or take time to recoup the money.
Yeah, take time to recuperate that, I'm sorry, yes.
What's the timeframe to recoup that?
Well, I think, I mean...
Yeah, depending on what all gets assessed, I mean, we have the, we have the ability to do it quickly, but if it's more, it may be over the life of the assessment, just, it just depends on, you know, what, what we end up negotiating.
And where are we talking about taking this money out of to pay for?
Well, I mean, we could, we can front the money out of, out of the water fund, or the 128 fund, or the combination of the two. Really, I'm not ready to move this ordinance forward until the petitions are signed and passed, if that makes sense.
Yeah, so you just want to hold this for now?
Yeah, what I was going to say at the end of the last motion was, this, this really goes along with it, and really all you'll see for the Clark Mill development as well is an ordinance that's similar to this, and maybe it just makes sense to wait until the petitions are signed, and then we know that if it's for Monday's meeting, if we have them in time, that it just may be, we may ask for a committee to review it at the beginning of next council meeting.
Yes.
And then if it's after that, it's after that.
Because we're just trying to be, again, under the tight timeline, but I'm, I'm not willing to move this forward...
Right.
Until the other ordinance is passed by council, and the petitions have been signed, if that makes sense.
So, really, we're just talking about this, we're not going to do anything with it?
Right.
Well, then I have another question, it said, was this actually bid out that they got this price, or that we got this price?
Well, we, we asked for some firms that we have received annual QRs...
RFQs.
RFQs from, and this was the best price, or, I can't, not on price, but...
Estimate, estimate.
Quote. The, the best firm was selected for this, that's how it came out, and that price was negotiated.
Well, since we're not doing anything with it, I'm done with this for now, anybody else?
No, but I would ask council to make sure they look this over, because as, as Mr. Markey said, you know, if everything moves along with this, then it could come before council during committee of the whole next week, and be added to the agenda, so look it over, make sure if you have questions, get in touch with the administration. Any other questions on it? Unfinished business, Blue Line Solutions?
Thank you, Mr. President, yes, we, we had our first reading the other night for Blue Line Solutions, and we did have some, and I see a little bit of support here for this Blue Line Solutions, and we had some people questioning allocation of civil penalties, and before I get to that, chief, you probably saw there was a gentleman that came up to the podium about one of the cities, there, there's a lawsuit or something.
Yeah, that was New Miami, and I'm going to defer.
And maybe you can bring up about that, and I just want to make sure we cross our Ts and dot our Is on other cities that have it, and has have been successful before we start going with the allocations.
We actually had talked about that in the in-person meeting, we had Blue Line Solutions, they actually brought up, because one of my questions was dealing with the exact issue, which was quotas, and under the old form of contract that Blue Line, Blue Line Solutions had, they had a requirement for a quota for the number of tickets that had to be written per month, and that's the basis of the challenge in New Miami, and so, based on that lawsuit, they've taken that provision out of the contract, that's one of the things that made us comfortable, because we're not there, they really were looking at it from a revenue perspective, it was a quota, they had to write so many tickets, it was based solely on revenue, here, I think it's a little bit different, we're all sort of in agreement that this is really a safety thing, it's not a, there's no quota, it's not for revenue, this is really a safety issue, and we have some evidence to demonstrate that.
Mr. Markey, and, and I looked up the, the case that he referred to and read through it, and I got the, I got the impression that it was also, these were unmanned camera, and, and this is different because they're manned.
You have an officer.
There's an officer there, so there were some due process problems with just having the camera taking a picture and sending the civil violation, so I think that was another difference with the New Miami lawsuit.
I, I would agree with that, and I think, just in, generally speaking, that Blue Line Solutions learned from the lawsuit, right?
Right.
And they've, they've changed the procedures to sort of come in alignment with what the law should be, which is manned cameras and not for revenue, no quotas.
From what I understood, the $3 million lawsuit, the dollar amount mentioned, that was actually when New Miami had the prior company, Opto Traffic, and then they went along with the Blue Line Solutions around 20, into 2015, 2016 started with them, and that's when they had, I think it's 100 hours, they were saying, which is one of the things that we made sure we did not have.
That's correct.
And it was nothing to do with construction, they would just sit there and stick it out, and whoever they could get, they got, there was also, before it comes up and somebody else complains about it, Gerard had an issue with this as well, and their issue was, it, it is Blue Line Solutions that they have, however, they had set this up in a construction zone, and when construction had ended, they failed to take down the $55, or 55 mile per hour sign, and was ticketing the people in what should have actually been a 65 mile an hour zone.
Sure.
And... And weren't adhering to that. So they still have ongoing issues on that, because Gerard's fighting it, even though ODOT itself said construction ended a month ago and the prices should have, the speed limit should have been changed.
We actually talked about Gerard as well, because I'm from Mahoning County originally, and Gerard's a historic speed trap town. So there, I could, I'm not gonna talk any better. Robert's laughing, cause he knows I, I was going on tirade about Gerard during our meeting. It's ridiculous.
I've, I've got a, from the research I did, I have a concern that I need you to address.
Yeah.
Um, if I was understanding it correctly, they were saying part of it was the city had set up legislation that they could do civil fines without insurance companies being, um, notified, or points on license, which is similar to what I'm seeing here. Are we okay as far as that goes?
I think that's, the state law ever says that can't be, uh, can't include points on the license. So I think the state law allows for this type of fine, and the state law also says you can't charge points on licenses based on these civil violations. We've put a due process procedure in place. We can take a closer look at that, just to make sure we're okay on that issue.
If, maybe I'm misunderstanding. That's what I thought was part of the issue, was if you cut all the baloney, the insurance companies were mad, they weren't getting their.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take a closer look at that issue. I'll take a closer look at that issue, just so we're not.
If you would.
Yep.
Anyone else have anything on that subject there, before we move on?
I don't see that this specifies a length of, uh, of contract here.
I was just gonna say that.
The contract itself is limited to two years. So the term of the actual contract is two, the ordinance doesn't say it, but the contract itself is limited to two years.
But we wanted it specifically for the length of the construction project only.
I thought I added that, didn't I?
No.
You did the ordinance 72, but not 71.
This, this rates the same as what it did before, basically.
I must be having vacation brain, cause I thought I sent you, uh, hold on.
Cause I had a note saying, looks like the same ordinance.
And so you said I, I changed which ordinance? Did you think I changed?
72, I believe.
71's still in our packet.
Oh, this is the ordinance that actually authorized the agreement?
Right.
Okay, yeah, we could, I could add that to this too. I mean, 72 is what our codified ordinances are, so I think that has more effect than the illegal agreement anyways, but I'm fine. I can add that language to this. This is no problem.
Make sure that we're, we're covered.
Only on, only on the freeway, and only during construction, during the term of the actual widening project, is what you want.
Right, correct.
Okay.
And I had actually mentioned something to Mr. Fowler after the meeting last week, that maybe we need to get a letter off to Blue Solutions, just so there are Blue Line Solutions, just so they are aware that as soon as that construction's done, we want our 30-day period that we're done with them. If, or if we get in, even if we could get a date, okay, they're gonna be done with this, and they're gonna be taking it down, and we could apply, so we could get out of it, cause I do believe we've got 30 days in the contract.
If you, if you just stop enforcing, right, then it's, you have the equipment, but you're not using it, and so we can give our 30 days. And I, I think there's ways for us to control it, but I understand your point.
Yeah, I don't want them to have a method to come back, well, you owe us money because.
I don't think the contract allows for that, but I understand. I, I know what you're saying. So you want?
I want it very clear that construction's done, we're done.
Chief, anything to add?
No, I think we've pretty much covered it.
Was there any issues with the allocation? I thought this was.
Yeah, we, I saw you did change allocation, a 250 per year on Fund 001, but solely for the purposes of paying the costs of the police officers administering the photo speed enforcement program, and the funded city portion of the cost of any school resource officers placed within this Norton City School District.
Yeah, and it looks like council maybe doesn't have the revised ordinance, is that?
I, I don't have it.
I don't either.
Ordinance 72.
Was there more to this?
No, I, I think they just don't have ordinance 72 at all. I think that's what.
No, no.
Well, I, I would still like to see more go into the roads.
I wanna make sure that the officers' full burden pay. I, I know I brought it up before, are these gonna be off-duty police officers? Because if not, obviously, the pensions and everything else, the PERS and all their benefits and, uh, taxes and everything come out of, or on top of their hourly pay. So if that is the case, where it's gonna be an on-duty police officer, I wanna make sure that full burden price is reimbursed to the city. Is that doable, Mr. Mester?
I would think so.
Anyone else have anything on the allocation? Are we happy with this for the second reading and third, or? What you said, Charlotte, about the roads as much as we could?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and I would agree with Ms. Whipke on that.
Yeah, yeah, no offense, Chief, but we take care of you guys pretty well. I want some more for the roads.
Oh, we can look at that one, uh, when we get the revised, uh, breakdown of what they have. I'm not sure what the last, uh, breakdown was.
Yeah, I think, well, I sent out to council a revised ordinance, right, that did have that breakdown changed in it. I just don't think you guys have it up there right now, so we'll.
Yeah, I don't have it here either.
Alright, any other, anything else with this, Mr. McLone?
No, I think, uh, we kinda got everything covered.
Uh, any new business? Topics for next work session, July 2nd, 2018. If there's not really any.
Just real quick, wanted to remind, July 1st is fast approaching. That is the deadline for everyone to get their discount for the connection.
Nash Heights residents, if you know anybody that lives there, July 1st is their last date to get the discount.
Right. I just feel like we should make that announcement every council meeting, to remind folks that that deadline is fast approaching and, you know.
Are we gonna put it up on our little signs we've got everywhere?
Yeah, we'll get some information to the, out to the residents, but July 1st is approaching.
Robert, how many, how many connections we have so far? Go on.
We were at about 131, uh, permits issued as of a couple weeks ago, according to Barberton. We're set for a meeting, so I'll, I'll find out here in the next week.
Okay.
Out of about 280, or what was it?
Little press release?
Three, something.
And send it in?
Yeah.
Yeah. We need that.
284.
Put it on the website, everywhere.
Yeah, um, last thing we want is people coming back saying, why didn't you?
You said 130, how much did?
130s.
One, and then 130s, and then 284?
Uh, there's 300, I believe.
300, believe, okay.
Alright, uh, any other topics for?
Mr. President, yes.
Yes.
Um, two things. First one is, um, and I think I alluded to this last week, it's about water, uh, and runoff, and was pointed towards Mr. Markey by Mr. Fowler earlier today. Just to bring this up, because the difference between a single po, uh, property having, uh, water problems, which may be their responsibility, versus an area-wide problem, so a number of homes along, like, for example, 261, where I'm seeing a lot of homes affected by some water, which has probably been changed because of the weather shifts that have occurred. So is that something that we should be weighing into, as I was saying, looking, seeing the engineer maybe taking a look at this? Is this something that some of our residents need a relief on? Because it's bigger than just one property. I just want some guidance.
Yeah, I think there's a difference, I don't wanna go too much into it, just off the cuff, but there's a difference between the city constructing stormwater improvements that benefit a bunch of people versus doing private improvements on, or what ostensibly, like a private improvement on private property. So I think there's, there's a difference there, but it's really gonna be an issue of what we're willing to, tolerance to pay for. And what we always wanna be careful about is, you know, where do you draw the line? Because there's flooding all over the city, and if we don't have a funding mechanism, right? It's hard to, that, that spigot, pun intended, right, could run you dry, and so you have to be careful about that.
I understand, and I was just trying to get some sort of idea of the magnitude of the problem, and to, to get some sort of idea where it is on 261, because I have had several complaints, and I'm trying to assess that, and I have turned that over to Mr. Fowler also.
I know that, uh, flooding in, in the general area there has been going on for at least 10 years, and part of it was, uh, uh, possibly issues on private property, which the city doesn't have access to. So.
Excuse me, Dan, where, where exactly are you talking about? I know the address, but what, what's there?
They have a thrift shop and affordable decking, and then the properties to the east of, the west of there, and across the street.
South of them, behind their property?
They haven't complained this year, but there were some issues previously when the creek overflowed and had wiped out all the ball of equipment from some new businesses that had located there. I haven't heard anything from that area at all. But it's really the thrift shop and, um, affordable decking. Uh, those two properties are kind of bringing their neighbors together to take a look at it.
So it's running down from the west, running down behind their property?
The north and probably west. Um, no, it's coming. It's, it's coming down from across the street primarily, and then washing down.
Across the street, I'm sorry.
It's 261.
It's running kinda south.
What's on 261?
Across 261. From the park area.
Yes.
That other side.
Yeah, the left side.
Running onto their property and then flooding around their premises.
Yeah, washing out. Uh, there's a driveway for one of the residents to the west of affordable decking that is probably gonna have to be replaced by the homeowner, and just different damages that have occurred.
Yeah, can we have, uh, engineer take a look at that, or whoever, take a look at it, see kinda what's going on, how long it's been going on, see if there's some way to remedy it?
And the last item was in Nash Heights, where we did have some wonderful roads put in. We are so appreciative to those. But, uh, there were a few people that had some things that were missed. Uh, one of them was a property just south of mine. There's a couple on Eastern Road where the, um, the road was not dropped down into the, I can't think what that's called.
Apron.
The apron, into the driveway, so it just stops into gravel or into something else. And I've had it mentioned by a couple homeowners, and I mentioned that to you, Mr. Fowler, earlier, but I don't know how widespread that was. I haven't gone up and down all the streets looking. Since they're still out there, I thought this would be the ideal time to catch them.
So we can send somebody out, take a look at them, run the whole area. Alright, uh.
Just see, we get a million phone calls a day from residents. They have to do a final walkthrough. There's a lot of time left for things to be repaired. Number one, they're not doing landscaping, because the weather hasn't been conducive, although it's been really hot and dry the last few days. Hope that they get the landscaping done. There's a year warranty period, so a lot of things going on, and, and so these things will be taken care of, and confident that Mr. Dombowski will make sure they get handled.
Thank you. Any other topics for next work session? Being on July 2nd, July 4th is a Wednesday that week, I would assume some vacations, so unless nothing comes up, we will probably look at canceling that work session, and if there's something that needs handled, then we would do it under Committee of the Whole, uh, for the final July 10th, 9th meeting. So, there's something to keep in mind there. Uh, so people know, we are going to have a special council meeting after immediately following this meeting, and public comments, was there?
None.
None? Okay. Alright, uh, as I said, uh, be a special meeting. I'm gonna go right into it and go from there. This meeting's adjourned. 8:05. Now, call the order, the special council meeting, Monday, June 18th, 2018. Time is 8:05. Would you please stand for pledge of allegiance and a moment of silent prayer?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Gaynor?
Here.
Mr. McLone?
Here.
Mr. Kurant?
Here.
Mr. Towesley?
Here.
Ms. Whipke?
Here.
Mr. Kernan?
Here.
Mr. Pilat?
Here. I have nothing from, uh, Committee of the Whole there. Uh, introduction of prior legislation, ordinance 70. Second reading falls under finance myself, so I'd like to offer ordinance 70, 2018, for its second reading, and ask clerk to read it, please.
An ordinance accepting the bid of Perrin Asphalt Company Incorporated to complete the 2018 street paving project and declaring an emergency.
This time, I would like to go ahead and waive the third.
I'll second.
Motion, the second, to waive the third reading on ordinance 70, 2018. Uh, this has been through the Board of Control, so everything should be fine there. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Pilat?
Yes.
Ms. Whipke?
Yes.
Mr. Gaynor?
Yes.
Mr. McLone?
Yes.
Mr. Kurant?
Yes.
Mr. Towesley?
Yes.
Mr. Kernan?
Yes.
And I would like to move to adopt ordinance 70, 2018.
I'll second.
Mr., Mr. President?
Just for.
I'm sorry.
I was just gonna read the list of streets that it's gonna.
You're gonna answer my question, I'm sorry.
Uh, this will include Oak Street, Long Drive, Pleasant Drive, Albert, uh, East Frontage Drive, Homack Avenue, Tapper Road, Nits Drive, and South Haemtown Road. And.
Just, excuse me, Mr. Pilat, um, just to clarify, that'll be from the bridge at 76 South to Greenwich Road on Haemtown.
Okay. Any other discussion on this? And the reason for waiving the third reading is just get the road project going here, so we can, uh, try to get some of these roads taken care of. Roll call, please.
Mr. Pilat?
Yes.
Ms. Whipke?
Yes.
Mr. Gaynor?
Yes.
Mr. McLone?
Yes.
Mr. Kurant?
Yes.
Mr. Towesley?
Yes.
Mr. Kernan?
Yes.
Uh, next item, ordinance 74, 2018, second reading. Mr. Kurant?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I'd like to offer ordinance 74, 2018, for its second reading.
An ordinance authorizing the administrative officer to execute and deliver an agreement to participate in the Summit County Engineers' Office Road Maintenance Program and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, and I'd like to, uh, waive, make a motion to waive the third reading and have a vote tonight.
Second.
Motion and second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Kurant?
Yes.
Mr. Gaynor?
Yes.
Mr. Towesley?
Yes.
Mr. McLone?
Yes.
Mr. Kurant? Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Whipke?
Yes.
Mr. Kernan?
Yes.
Mr. Pilat?
Yes.
And I'd like to move to adopt ordinance number 74, 2018.
Second.
I'll second. That's it.
I think Mr. Gaynor did.
Oh, alright.
Quietly.
Uh, when she quiet?
I wasn't gonna go there.
I knew somebody had to do it.
Motion, second, to adopt ordinance 74, 2018. Any discussion? This is the contract with the county where they jumped the gun, uh, before giving us the contract to sign. Uh, this will allow, uh, Reimer Road to be completed. The base is down, still needs the top, uh, coat put on, and rather than make the residents suffer through waiting on all this to be finished, uh, felt it was prudent to go ahead and have the third reading waived this evening.
Like the very end of the street needs to be done where it comes out on the, what would that Cleveland Maslin be to, on Reimer?
That connection there, yeah.
Yeah, right at that, where it comes up to the street.
I think it's not done, they haven't put the top coat on yet, so it'll bring it up a little. Yeah, I think they feather that in, so they just keep it a little bit deeper. I noticed that they did the.
noticed that they did the same thing when they did Easton, Shellheart East, they cut it a little bit lower on the first coat, then the second coat will feather it, should feather it all in, so they didn't do the top coat.
Yeah, I thought it was gravel down there at that end, because I went down afterwards.
We'll double check it.
Whatever it is, they'll have to finish it.
That's, that's where they cut the two boxes in on either side, before they pave.
Right, right.
Once we approve this, Mr. Fowler, uh, once we execute it and give it to Summit County, how long till they can, uh, get Perrin back?
I'm, I'm going to call them tomorrow and let them know it's been approved, and we're ready to move forward, I'm hopeful that it'll be soon, because we have this other paving project now, that we can get them all done at the same time.
And if not, just remind them, it's your fault.
I will do that, it's not my fault, their fault.
Exactly.
Summit County's, not, not Perrin's.
Not ours, not anybody here, Summit County.
Any further discussion?
I, I would just like to say, if this happens next year in the future, I may be inclined to vote no, moving forward with such a thing.
No, if it happens again next year, then just foot the bill, and we'll get our roads done free.
That's what I mean.
Well, I, we're trying this bidding out ourselves, I think, I think we see where we were, I really think it's advantageous for us to start that process next year.
Okay. Any other discussion? Worst case, Paul, what we can do is, is maybe, you know, essentially, I don't know, can we impose a, a fine or a penalty fee for, I don't know.
Hopefully, Mr. Fowler's...
Hopefully, uh, yeah, hopefully with his information, we won't have to worry about that in the future, so, roll call, please.
Mr. Corant?
Yes.
Mr. Gaynor?
Yes.
Mr. Towesley?
Yes.
Mr. McLone?
Yes.
Ms. Whipke?
Yes.
Mr. Kernan?
Yes.
Mr. Pilat?
Yes. Next item, ordinance 75, 2018, uh, it should be second reading, shouldn't it?
Yes.
Yes, sorry about that.
And, uh, that also falls under Mr. Corant.
Thank you, Mr. President, at this time, I'd like to offer ordinance number 75, 2018, for its second reading, and ask the clerk to read it.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 32-2018, the proposal of Rudzig Excavating Incorporated in an amount not to exceed 88,000 for the repaving of Little Boulevard, Brookside Court, and Shellheart Drive to include the police driveway and parking lot and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, and at this time, I'd like to make a motion to waive the third reading and call to vote.
Second.
Motion, the second to waive the third reading, any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Corant?
Yes.
Mr. Gaynor?
Yes.
Mr. Towesley?
Yes.
Mr. McLone?
Yes.
Ms. Whipke?
Yes.
Mr. Kernan?
Yes.
Mr. Pilat?
Yes.
Thank you, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 75, 2018.
Second.
Motion, the second to adopt ordinance 75, 2018, any further discussion? This is just adding verbiage, this is no additional dollars out of, uh, the city's pocket, this is just adding verbiage, including the parking lot for the police station and that area over there. No further discussion, roll call, please.
Mr. Corant?
Yes.
Mr. Gaynor?
Yes.
Mr. Towesley?
Yes.